Good evening and thank you for your time. Darlington County has been blessed with a rich history in the fire service. We're home to one of the oldest community fire departments at a leading station in the state. We had numerous officers that began their careers with us and later moving on to serve in leadership roles at some other great departments as well. The cities of Darlington and Hartsfield have shared their leadership with the state in assisting with the birth of the South Carolina Fire Academy and even helped to establish other fire departments throughout the state. The auditorium at the academy is named in honor of Hartsfield's Chief Denny, who also served as the past president for the Firefighters Association. Darlington County Fire Chaplain and retired Hartsfield Fire Chief Tommy Livingston is also a past president of the association. Retired Fire Chief Jim Stone was able to serve for more than 50 years to his community. Tonight, we're blessed to have one of the most influential people in the fire service with us in Carter Jones. He now serves as Special Projects Coordinator for the South Carolina Firefighters Association. He's recently compiled the stories of the rich history South Carolina has in the birth, growth, and contributions of the fire service. His book, A Legacy That Lives On, shares the stories from across the state that until recently were only known by a few. With him, we have Executive Director Kyle Minnick and Director of Operations Ashley Vogel. At this time, we would like to present A Legacy That Lives On to the Darlington County Library Systems so that others may enjoy in the history of our service.
Imocation and pledge of allegiance. Governor Douglas, imocation. Mr. Coker, please.
Father God, we all want to thank you, O Lord, for last night's rest and a favor, a touch, a welcome, a love this morning. Father God, we just want to thank you, O Lord, for starting us on a new day and closing our right mind. And we ask you, O Lord, come in this old building, we ask the blessing for each and everyone that has a ten here this afternoon, O Lord. And Father God, we can ask the blessing for the ones that could have a ten and will not attend. And Father God, we ask you today, O Lord, that go with the homes, the hospitals, wherever it sits, O Lord. Father, we asking you to touch them, O Lord. Father, we know that you have more power, more medicine in heaven, your garment, than any drust or whatsoever. And Father, we asking you to touch them, O Lord, so that they can see light and get further strength as well. And Father God, we asking you today, O Lord, that go with through foreign countries, touch our boys, girls, men, and women, O Lord. Give them some strength that folks out of sin are coming home one day. And Father, don't forget about our girl men. We asking you to touch them, O Lord. Give them some strength, O Lord, that they can do the right things. And Father, we asking you today, to lead us and guide us through this meeting in your name sake. Amen.
Amen. In the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll see the citizens' comments. Just to let you know that it's two minutes and there'll be a timer when it goes off at any of the two minutes. And no one here is for 10 minutes, but we'd be saying them also. So we'll go ahead and get started. Ms. Kim Gardner.
Good evening. My name's Kim Gardner and I live in Hartsfield. I live in the Pine Ridge community. And I would like to ask if possible, if you guys would look at having a larger budget for our Sheriff's Department. With the crime rate that has increased and been a steady increase in our area, the Sheriff's Department does not have the deputies in which patrol our areas to help combat and take care of the crime that's available and just running rampant at some times. They're doing the best they can with the funding that they have and the deputies available. And at times, you'll see them four and five at one area, but they can't go from one spot in the county to the next and cover everything. Feel like we need more deputies. And the only way to do that is somehow or another find more money in the budget to allocate towards the Sheriff's Department. I'm part of, again, the Pine Ridge area and would appreciate if you can do something to help find more money to fund our Sheriff's Department, get more deputies on the street.
Thank you. You're right.
My name's Brian Axon. I own a piece of property on High Point and Galloway Town Road. I also got a business, Axon Brothers Trucking in uptown Hartsfield, the edge of town. This, Gardner, pretty much summed it up with helping out the community with more deputies, traffic, whatever we need to do. And I'd like to publicly donate any time I can to help them any way possible, you know. If we can save money by getting citizens to step up and do their thing by cameras, whatever, putting them in the area. But when it all boils down to our Sheriff's Department doing everything they can, and they just, right now, they're overrun with what they're fighting. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richie Stevens.
Hello. My name's Richie Stevens. Sounds like we're all here pretty much for the same reasons, crime in the county. I'd like to thank you all for taking the opportunity to speak on behalf of some of the citizens of Darlington County. Citizens have fallen victims to what appears to be an escalating crime rates in Darlington County. As you may or may not be aware, I've recently created a Facebook page designed to bring transparency and awareness to the plight that Darlington County is facing and it's truly been revealing. Although some are saying that I have ulterior motive, let me assure you that will be further from the truth. It has turned out to be quite revealing. I do not think my two minutes on here is enough to provide with details, data regarding statistics that I gathered. So the most pressing concern and questions for today is what is the actual shortage among patrol and investigations? What is the plan to build these vacancies? Allow me to close by stating that this is not meant to be attacked on anyone, at least at the Darlington County Sheriff's Office. As ex-law enforcement myself, we commend our brave LEOs that are out there putting their lives on the line for us. But as a group, we are tired of the most common excuse, which is they're doing all they can. Doing all they can. Would you trust a surgeon or a doctor stating, "Put a fly by the seat of your pants"? Completely neither answer is good enough. I thank you for your time and we, the people of Darlington County, would follow the guidance, assistance, and resolution from this council for the sake and concern of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn Wood Epps. Whoa, too late.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, I know you a little bit. Mr. Davis, I've never met you. And Mr. Coker, we both have a friend who I kind of rely on that will help me stay in good graces with you all. But I just want to say that I offer my condolences to especially you. I didn't see you Friday night. I looked for you, but I didn't see you. But I would have altered my condolences Friday night, but you weren't there, were you?
I wasn't.
I know I'm going to catch the dickens after football season.
I was going to say.
But I just want to say that Darlington smoked Hartsfield three times this year in basketball. And, but come football, I'm going to have to hear it from them. I'm going to have to take it. I'm getting it out tonight, but after football, I'm going to have to take it. But just so you'll know, I met the new football coach Friday night also. And I told him in plain English that he had four years to beat Hartsfield. And if he didn't beat Hartsfield in four years, he might as well go ahead and resign. But we were going to talk trash about him if he didn't and we'd run him off. So I know I'm going to catch it after football season next year, but I'm riding high tonight.
Credit me. Sir. I'm pulling one.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Paul Saffell.
That's right. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing? Mr. Chairman of the Taxpayers of Darlington County, we would like to request that you vote for an order that will allow the installment payments on taxes, tax paid property taxes, because of the high cost of living for elderly seniors, high cost of medicine and medical care, and the limited income and the downswing in the economy makes it harder and harder for people to live and provide for their families and survive. Two years ago, the Chesterfield County enacted this installment order outlined in the state statute and supported by it at that time, State Lieutenant Sergeant John Lucas. The taxpayers there have felt relief and a sense of their elected councilman caring about their families and overall welfare. In good spirit, we are asking you to do the same thing of the taxpayers of Darlington County and their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
for discussion of personnel matters, discussion of negotiation incidents to propose contractual arrangements.
Need a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move that we go into executive session for discussion of personnel matters, discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contractual arrangements to include our county administrator and our county attorney.
And others if necessary.
And others necessary if called.
Need a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I move to accept the consent agenda and its information out of 5A and 5B.
Need a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 5B, Historical Commission Board Minutes, that's an update, 7D. Approval of Minutes.
I move to approve public hearing in regular meeting, January 2nd, 2019, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. No ordinances. Number eight, resolutions. Resolution number 696, resolution accepted in bequeaths of Carolyn Norman Phillips to and for the Darlington County Historical Commission.
I move that we accept resolution number 696 for approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 8B, resolution number 697, resolution assigning $1.5 million of unassigned fund balances to capital project replacement for county fleet vehicles. Need a motion?
So move for approval, 697.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Committee reports? Afternoon. Other items? TNA, Mr. Kilgo would like Mr. Lynette Moody to serve on the library board.
I move to appoint Lynette Moody to the library board.
Need a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Mine would be a carryover for the construction board.
Carryover.
Flowers. Mr. Coker?
Carryover, please.
10B, appointment to the Economic Development Portmanship Board. Appointment to FY 19, compensation tax viable for media.
We do 10B.
10B or 10D?
Economic Development Partnership.
10B. Yeah. Approval to the Economic Development Portmanship Board. 58. Need a motion for approval from nominees?
So move. I'll read them in. Darlington County Progress has nominated Mr. Jim Ivy of Dedicated Community Bank and Mr. Don Clark of Commercial Industrial Contractors.
Need a motion?
Move if we accept.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Do you want to do the top executives?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Danny Ho, POG Precision, and Mr. Doyle Hopper of New Core.
Need a motion?
Move if we accept.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 10D. 10C, appointment to the FY 19, 20, accommodation tax viable for media. Joseph Salibi Jr., no longer associated with the hospitality business.
He is on there, he was on there last year as a citizen at large. He lived from hospitality business to citizen at large this time last year.
So do we have him here now?
Listen, picks everyone. Everyone, it was two of two except for Mr. Tenny, who was one of two, and then other than Mr. Salibi from Darlington, I had no problem keeping those same representatives from the, for the community and finding a replacement for Mr. Salibi.
Need a motion?
I don't think he's, I think he's, Mr. Salibi wants to serve. I think it's just a footnote, he's not, he can serve as a net large. Well, that's where he was originally at. Well, if that's the case, I move that we reappoint those members.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 10D, appointment to PD Regional Council of Governor's Boards. I'd like to recommend Mr. George Thomas, Mr. Bobby Kilgo. Need a motion?
Move if we accept. Mr. Kilgo and Mr. Thomas.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Point with the county council committee, Chairman Hudson, Page 107. I recommend we keep saying ones.
Mr. Coker, we don't vote on the, on the county council committees. That's a chairman, chairman appointment.
We keep saying ones that's on the committee. And then we go down to the enterprise fleet management contract. Need a motion?
Move if we accept.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. 10G, statewide mutual aid agreement for emergency and disaster response recovery, Page 108. Need a motion?
Move to approve the statewide mutual aid agreement.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Any next request by the landfill recycling solid waste collection center to close at 4:30 PM on Saturday, March 7th, 2019. And that would be thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I see where it says large sound, I think we'd have that up of good ways in advance.
We planned to put that up tomorrow. Did you have print letters yet?
No, but I've got to give them a name on.
At least the Saturday.
Well, we're going to put them up this week so they got weeks of notice.
Yep.
That's all, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Soul Source purchased seven thermal imaging cameras for fire district, 54,432.
I move for approval of the Soul Source.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Force management at Lake Darbo. Need a motion? That's the, pull all approval.
I need to ask Mr. Cocker a question. I do not work for Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard does not work for me, but we do share the same, we have shared these same clients and have some now. Would that be considered, do I need to recuse myself from voting or is that far enough away that?
I don't think you would have to, but since you bring it up, you may, in this instance, you would be able to. But I don't think it's even required. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? For Mr. Flowers.
Yeah, do I need to fill that, Lynette, do I need to fill that out at the proper time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All eyes, administrator update.
The two things I have for you tonight is, one, you had asked for a work session in February. We've established a work session for you on February the 18th. Mr. Lynette, correct me if I'm wrong. Now, February the 18th, out at the Darlington Raceway, the media center where we've had work sessions in the past, the chairman has called for a finance committee meeting, which you saw the finance committee appointed to meet at 9:00 AM that day, and then your work session will start at 10:00. So if you want to hear the overview of the audit which is in front of you, certainly come on at 9:00 o'clock. The finance committee will meet at 9:00 and then your work session to review a number of issues on the table, which will include where the courthouse situation stands, how our audit looks, financial information and projects still pending and upcoming in the mid this year. We'll do all that discussion in our work session. So that brings you to what you have in front of you, the 2018, June 30, 2018 audit. So you have all received that. For anybody else who wants a copy of it, it's already posted to our website, so it's available in PDF format to download or review. I will just mention that, you know, our net positions for the enterprise funds and our fund balances are all in better shape, show, continue to show improvement. There are still a couple of notes left on the audit of some issues that need to be worked out. There's no way to work those out until we clear them as we go. I think, Chairman, how many did we clear this past year?
That year, we went, started off with 13, went down to 10, or down to two.
Down to two now. And when we clear those issues from year to year, especially after this new audit group gets in and learns our system and sees what we got from where we had to make, you know, a change from the previous audit. I think it'll continue to improve. We'll go through the details of different funds and detail aspects of it in that financial review committee. Rather than trying to give you all that tonight and then give it to you in the end.
So do we have a hard copy of this in public libraries?
We can put a hard copy in public libraries. Well, we will print a copy and put, we don't have so many of these, we can print a PDF copy. But now.
We used to do that, yeah.
Well, I think we've done that in different things in the past, but that will, and I'm not sure if anyone actually go look at it, but it will be there.
And like I said, it's very easily accessible on our web page as well for anybody who just wants to pull it for electronic copy. But we'll make sure, Mr. Evans, is he in here? Do we need to print those and get them to you? Can you print those for us and put them available in libraries?
Why don't you print them and send them with the minutes?
With the minutes. We'll make sure the library is confident. They're available right now if somebody wants to pull them.
Good question. Comment, members of council. Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to say thanks to the Sheriff's Department for making us a little safer tonight. I appreciate, you know, the efforts and the reference to the, to take the effort. And also, I'd just like to say again that we're working on the stormwater projects and getting rid of some of this water, doing and studying that now. We attended some, a meeting on Friday with, of course, EMS folks and it was really good at the car. So we're really, I'm really pleased to see that we're working on this water flooding in this area while we have some time to do that study. And it was through the South Carolina Disaster Recovery Group, which was very beneficial. And I look forward to keep on working so when the time comes, at least we'll try to be ahead of the game, at least know what's happening. Thank you.
Well, tonight, we accepted the, or the resolution accepted the request of Carolyn Norman Phillips and we have Brian. I would like for him to stand up and be recognized and give us a, just a statement about why we have, why we have all the historical commission members here and.
Hey, we're not going to put you on the spot.
It's a momentous day in the history of Darlington County and it's a day that every citizen can celebrate the goodness of one citizen. She valued the history of Darlington County. She valued our historical narrative and thought it was a narrative that was bright enough and carried enough weight that it needed to be told. The estate bequeath, which they did not read, was specific in that we established a Darlington County museum and that the residual funds after that's created would go to the care and maintenance of that facility. We're already working towards that. Now that the vote has been made official, we'll pick up a little bit of speed with that and as we progress along the way, we'll bring reports back as to where we're at and what's going on.
Well, it is a huge, huge financial statement.
A windfall.
Yes. That's great. That's all I have.
Right. Mr. Stewart, I'd like to thank you and your staff. This looks like just a book of papers, but it's a lot of work. I know you and your team have dedicated a lot of time to this information and a lot of things go unrecognized, but you know, county's fortunate to have the number of employees that we do are dedicated and certainly, and also for the turnout tonight. I've said it many times, it's not easy to sit up here and listen to some of the comments. You know, it's not perfect and stuff, a lot of things are more complex than just having money. So I appreciate the public feedback and the attendance and I just hope that you continue to bet your staff and all the employees how much we appreciate your service.
Doug?
I'd like to thank the military for the work they're doing, some of the things we discussed tonight. And I'd like to thank everybody that attended. That showed us that you care about the county. And God bless you and have a safe trip home. Thank you.[1767.33] Thank you.
Good evening. To the citizens of Darlington County, thank you for allowing us to serve you. We're here for you. We'd like to thank each and every one of y'all that spoke on this afternoon. Are there any members of the Phillips family here? But again, I just want to thank them. And sorry if now when I'm putting, being here tonight. But if you see me looking at my phone, I'm putting ups up. To the citizens of Darlington County, the Sheriff's Department, DCSE website has a new app you can download from the App Store. And you can go over there and do various things, also the tips. It takes everybody to run a village. It takes everyone. We're all citizens of Darlington County. I got crime in my neighborhood. So yes, I'm glad they started this app so now I don't have to say who I am. And I'm certain, I don't have to say who I am. But I will call. I have called. Still don't call with crime. But if you don't know, you go to your App Store, deep, well, I don't know. I don't know if anybody can see, but it come up at the Sheriff's Department with the Sheriff Car. And you can know, you can go through it and see what I all need to be done. But thanks to the Sheriff's Department for getting this up. We are working for you. We are all Darlington County. Thank you, sir.
You go.
I just wanted to say the same thing, actually. The three citizens that spoke about the crime in our communities, it is devastating. I think they may have all left, but that's, it's not on deaf ears that they're speaking to us. We're behind the sheriff and everything that he does and we're going to work together and see what we can do about this. I also think we need to look at an installment ordinance for, for our taxpayers to give them a little relief and burden that they need to have paid installments in advance and we'll, we'll definitely be looking at that, Mr. Bell.
I follow that as far as the budget process coming out this year.
I agree. And as far as Mr. Epps. Going back in history, the last time the Darlington Falcons beat the Hartsville Red Foxes three times in one year, I believe the Hartsville won the state championship that year in 2012. I don't think we have the team to do that this year. Darlington may, so I will be pulling for the Falcons. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
So we appreciate what you do for the county, all the hard work and dedication that your employees go through and the code enforcements and her crew, they do a wonderful job. Don't know anything, they'll explain it. They came to Lamar two or three times to call them and take action on it. And we have heard everything that people here are saying, we will be working on it. And Mr. Bell, we did take it lightly when you told us that, so that's all, that's all that's, we'll be working on.
It's a bit old, Darlington County.
But that's all I have. Make the budget with yours.
Move good yours.